I do the same. Like see it in my car. Emails will come in. Yeah. They'll show us on Red, when I get back to the office. Anything that comes in. I start making. I started dropping magazines in my calendar too. Do you ever see green stuff in my calendar? It's like a workflow thing that I.
Is there anything I should add?
Every chance is lost.
Anyway, that's some of the same people. Sorry, you almost got stuck in your ditch. You almost drew out of your ditch. Which I just has been verified as quite. I understand why you would have a first take for this.
Like I say, we're.
I'm Carla Nazarra. Nice to meet you too.
As you can tell, the idea is to have everybody tell us.
Look up the people I don't know.
Oh yeah, when she's going through the slide, um, just one team member on those and then. Go to now, so is it uh same presentation as last time, kind of different or?
Yeah.
Cool.
There's the winner, where is she? Come on in. Good evening.
Tom.
Um, welcome and thank you for coming this evening. I'm Carla Nazarra, the Chair of the Meeting Committee. We have an exciting evening planned. And thank you for coming on this beautiful day as well. So I'm just going to introduce our owner's project manager, Colliers. So we have um Mike and we have Susanna. And then we have um LBA, who's our designer. We have Jenny and we have Lee. So they will introduce everyone else. And I always like to do this, can we just pass the microphone around after they finish? Just to introduce yourselves and just give us a little bit about like who you are. I'm a parent, I'm a, I'm a butter. I'm FinCom, whatever. Jenny.
I'm Nicole with GPI, the traffic consultant.
Susanna with Colliers.
Um, Mike Carroll with Colliers as well.
I'm Rebecca with GPI, also the traffic consultant.
Jaylon, I'm the Director of Operations in Town Hall.
Hi, Chris Jones, I'm Lieutenant, in charge of School Services at the Police Department. And which also members of the County Department.
Good evening, Tom Milicek, Superintendent.
Lisa, I'm an Architect.
Tom Boyes, School Committee Member.
Barbara, I'm a senior. I'm a fourth grade teacher.
Hi, Cara Dalia, I live on Dana Road, my daughter is a kindergarten consultant.
Hi, Laura Stone, I'm a senior neighbor.
Mike Holmes, a butter.
Kim Saley, I'm a first grader and I assume to be a kindergarten.
Eric Ledloff, I have a second grade.
Marty McAdam, I live on Dana Street.
Kristen Swartz, I have a fifth and a first grader.
I'm Greg Stepman, Member of the Permanent Building Committee.
The Disco Doctor, a one night parent, and volunteer.
Mark Sal, I'm a neighbor, I'm also on the FinCom and Tommy.
Matt Holman, uh, second grade and third grade.
Uh, Ray Porter, Climate Advisory Committee.
Hi, Kristen Bevel, I have uh two future Killen students and I live a couple houses up on Killen.
Lindsay Fulton, Killen Principal.
That is John Thornton from Wakefield Street.
Galata Podovski, uh, Town Meeting Member with the Reading Climate Advisory Committee.
John Sullivan, Town Meeting Member, Prime Screen Member at Killen.
Tara Gregory, Town Meeting Member.
Denise Sayoso, I'm a parent educator here, I'm also a Town Meeting Member.
Ed Ross, uh, FinCom, also a building committee.
Hello, everybody. Lee, Architect again. So a couple of weeks ago, we met and our traffic engineer showed you all kinds of observations, which I think you all agreed were, were pretty spot on. Um, there are plenty of problems, it's a neighborhood. There's queuing, there's kids, there's safety issues, all kinds of stuff. And we tend to look at this stuff early, hear your concerns and try to do something about it. What they've been doing over the last two, so first of all, I want to thank you for coming here and for complaining. Remember, we like, I'm complaining, but that's what we wanted to hear. We needed to confirm that the things that they were seeing were real and that you confirmed those. The way we use that is, we know that we can't come up with the perfect thing. Nothing's perfect, but we can really, really, really improve the situations that are here by focusing on the right things. And um, we can change it for the new building. This is our opportunity to make change. So, and those of you who are new or from FinCom or from Town or anything like that, thank you so much for coming. All we want to do is share our information with you and get your, um, you know, get your feedback. So thank you for showing up. I will say that uh, who's going to do this, Nicole today? You are? Rebecca? Okay, Rebecca's going to do this. I have worked with Rebecca before at Swan Scott and others where they had horrendous traffic issues. And they're amazing, the way that they do this in a very, very um uh uh fact-based way. And I think that they understand you at this point. And uh, I'd like you to just show what we've done. What we're going to show you tonight are the results of the things that you've talked about and a couple of ways for us to try to solve them the best we can. In balance, they're very different than what you have now because we have a, we'll have a new building or renovation and a different kind of approach to the site. And see if you agree that this is going, this is going in the right direction. And if you have any um, any recommendations or ideas for us, please share them. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Um, I just want to reiterate exactly what Lee was saying. Thank you all for coming um, two weeks ago and providing all of your great feedback. And we've tried to do our best to take all of that information from you and provide you with a couple of ideas for potential solutions for the new school. That really balance out the needs of the neighborhood and of the school. And so tonight, the agenda that we kind of want to walk through is all, since there are some new faces in the room, we just want to give a little bit of a recap on some of those existing conditions, those issues that we heard the last time that we were here. And what we have identified as some of the goals of the traffic study and of the improvements that will ultimately be made for the new school based on the feedback that we heard from you and the things that um, we think you want to see and confirm that that is true. And then we'll talk a little bit about uh, the enrollment and the scheduling that will need to happen for the uh, new school. And then walk through some preliminary circulation and parking alternatives um, for the school. And then talk a little bit about the next steps um, going forward. Uh, so to start off, for those uh, that remember, some of the issues that we saw around the school, obviously pedestrian safety was probably the number one thing that we heard from a lot of people. Where there are some very difficult crossings, where sightlines are, are limited um, at some of the intersections because of uh, vehicles that park very close to the crosswalks. Some of the crosswalks are, are extremely long as well, which makes it difficult for uh, young students to be able to cross these, particularly when there's cars that are blocking them. A lot of the crosswalks, the ramps are not accessible or they're missing ramps altogether, um, which really becomes a tripping hazard for these young kids to be able to walk to school safely. Some of the other things that we saw, particularly along Charles Street, right near the school, is that um, parents are parking um, up onto the sidewalk and onto that grass buffer that's between the sidewalk and the street, uh, making it difficult for people to walk to school. Uh, there's a concern from parents that as they're walking their kids, someone's going to open the door and hit the kids. Um, it's very difficult to navigate a stroller through there, uh, because the cars don't leave a lot of space. Uh, some of the other things that we saw, obviously, were kind of the queuing that occurs off-site as well, that extends uh, quite far down the road, um, all the way back to Wakefield Street. And we'll see that in the next graphic. Uh, and then the parking that occurs in the neighborhoods as well, where there's cars that are parked on both sides of the street. Uh, and it's very difficult to get through those streets with cars parked on both sides. Uh, so this was kind of what we showed from our observations of the morning arrival period. So you can see in black, this indicates where people are parking. So not a ton of parking that's occurring in the morning, but there are definitely some people who do prefer to park their vehicle and walk their kids up to the front door. Uh, but there is a rolling drop-off queue in the morning. And you can see from this graphic, there's not a ton of space on the site itself for those cars to queue. And so they are backing up all the way back down to Wakefield Street, um, sort of to the south of the school and then up to Dana Road to the north of the school. Uh, and when that occurs, when you have cars parked on the side of the road, plus a long line of queued vehicles, it's really difficult for anyone to get through there. And it becomes a hazard for emergency vehicles trying to get through there as well. Uh, in the afternoon, what we saw, obviously, because parents are not allowed to drive onto the school in the afternoon, only buses are, all the parents are parking in the neighborhood around the school. Uh, and like I mentioned, they're parking on both sides of the street. They're parking right up close to the crosswalks, uh, making it difficult for people to see the kids crossing the roadway, um, making it difficult to make turning movements. And as a result, cars are kind of taking turns driving down the road because it essentially makes the road a, a one-lane roadway. So cars are having to kind of even and out uh, between those vehicles. Another thing that we did know is uh, the total number of vehicles that were parked in the neighborhood at the peak time. So what we did see was a hundred and fifteen total vehicles parked in the neighborhood. You know, right as schools kind of releasing, when you have the maximum number of parents there. And then some of the things that we heard from the neighbors were that there's definitely a desire to improve the pedestrian safety. Uh, slow cars down in the area, uh, speeding particularly along April Street was a major concern where cars were still going forty miles an hour. Even when the uh, school zone is active, they're still going quite quickly um, through that area. Uh, obviously, the neighbors don't want people blocking their driveways anymore. It, but still understanding that there is some need to have cars parked in and around the neighborhood. We can't accommodate everyone parking on the site, but we definitely want to make some accommodations for them. And then also be able to maintain a better sense of uh, the community. So what we heard from a lot of people is, we had talked about the idea of having a rolling pickup and it seemed like that was something that people would prefer not to actually have, that people enjoy that time of being able to go and meet the parents of um, their, their kids' friends, interact with the teachers and have that time uh, on the site itself during that pickup period. And that that would be a hindrance if we were to take that away. So what we wanted to do was to provide uh, more opportunities for parking, better parking locations, safer pedestrian crossings, so that the parking isn't creating an obstruction to people actually walking and biking to school. So some of the uh, goals that we came up with based on that, that feedback that we received were obviously improving the pedestrian safety, visibility of the crosswalks, uh, making them more accessible by improving the, the ramps. And then also uh, right now, currently, all of the signs for the crosswalks are all static. We talked about the idea of having some that would be dynamic, so that if you press a button, it would activate the signal um, to alert cars that there are people crossing. And that there might even be some locations where it makes sense to have a signalized crossing where it actually requires people to stop on a red light. Uh, we wanted to alleviate as much of the off-site queuing as we can in the morning and make sure that the parking is not overwhelming the neighborhood, uh, so that vehicles aren't able to get through anymore. And just improve the general circulation and traffic flow through the area. Uh, we also wanted to i- improve the access and egress, uh, making sure that the access and egress is located on appropriate roadways. So what we heard overwhelmingly was that having access off April Street uh, isn't a good idea because of the speed of traffic there and all of the um, the traffic volumes are very high on that roadway and it could create a lot of congestion having that occur. Uh, and then we also wanted to develop a strategy, strategy for accommodating both the K through five enrollment that's already there, but also the potential for all of the pre-K uh, students to be there. And so we needed to look at what's different in how the K through five kids are arriving and leaving the school compared to the pre-K kids. Uh, and considering, you know, staggering the schedules so that those two can occur. Uh, because as we see from the graphics on the queuing and the parking, having those occur at the same time likely isn't going to work. So one of the things that we looked at, obviously, was the, the K through five enrollment currently is at four hundred twenty students. In the future, it's planned to go to four hundred fifty-five. So not a huge increase there, but it is an increase in enrollment. So we do want to look at ways that we can make things a little bit more efficient. But for the pre-K, that's where we see the largest jump. So currently, there are only thirty kids enrolled in the pre-K program. And uh, they're all coming from within the school district, within the neighborhood itself. In the future though, those kids, um, there could be an enrollment of up to a hundred eighty kids at the school in the pre-K program, which would be an increase of a hundred and fifty. But those kids would also be coming from all over town, not just within uh, the Killen neighborhood itself. So right now, the school is very much a community school and this would be changing it to more of a district-wide school with that K through, uh, pre-K enrollment. Uh, so one of the things that we looked at was what would we anticipate for uh, vehicles to be coming to the site in the morning and in the afternoon during uh, the arrival and dismissal periods for both the K through five and for the pre-K, to understand, can these be occurring at the same time? And if not, how far apart do these enrollment or these uh, arrival and dismissal times need to be? So we looked at things like the number of students that are actually um, enrolled in each program, uh, as well as kids who are in before-school or after-school programs. Uh, the number of kids who are bused or take uh, special education vans to and from the school. We looked at how many kids approximately are walking and biking. And this number is likely on the very conservative side, uh, because that is based on wintertime observations. So on warmer weather days, we'll likely have a lot uh, more people walking to get to school. Uh, but we wanted to provide a conservative estimate of how many people could be coming on a worst-case day, so that we're not creating something that for several months out of the year, isn't really working. And then we look at the school's absentee rate as well. Um, and factor that in for how many kids um, are absent each day. And then also looking at how many siblings there are um, within a household, so that we're factoring in how many households are the kids actually coming from. And when we compare all that information, what we found was that in the morning with the future enrollment, we are anticipating about a hundred and ninety-five vehicles that need to be accommodated coming to the school for the K through five. Uh, and for the pre-K, about eighty-one uh, vehicles. And then in the afternoon, we're looking at slightly lower numbers, um, because there is a higher participation in the after-school programs in the afternoon. Uh, so we're looking at about a hundred and forty-five vehicles that we need to accommodate in the afternoon for the uh, K through five enrollment and fifty-three for the pre-K. So when we look at those numbers, what we find for having a um, rolling drop-off in the morning, similar to what is being done now and having a um, pickup where people are parking and walking to get their kids and then uh, walking back to their vehicles in the afternoon, what we would need to do is uh, stagger the arrival and dismissal times for the pre-K by about fifteen minutes in order to be able to accommodate all of those vehicles in the area for the queuing or for the parking. And some ways that we're looking at doing that, uh, we had talked about how the on-street parking on both sides of the road last time was um, a hindrance to emergency vehicles being able to get through to traffic, just general traffic flow. So what we looked at was an option that would actually uh, still have the same back-of-sidewalk to back-of-sidewalk width, so the road would not need to be widened at all. So there would be no impact to front yards um, along the neighborhood, but accommodating essentially one travel lane in each direction with a parking lane on one side of the road. And here you can see the area that is in yellow indicates um, where that parking would be. And we have proposed having it on the school side of the road, so on the easterly side of the roadway. Uh, and the main reasons for that are, obviously, for um, as you're walking to your vehicle or to the school from your vehicle, um, it requires the lowest number of crossings of the roadway, so you don't have to cross the roadway um, to get there. Uh, so that's really the main reason for um, providing in, in that direction. Uh, but also when you look at where the, the student enrollment is, a lot of the vehicles that will be coming to the school are coming from the west and from the south. So they will be traveling in that direction already to get to the school. And we see that really from the queuing that's occurring that extends back to Wakefield Street. Um, so that's the direction the cars are already headed as well. Uh, so with that, we would essentially remove the um, the grass buffer that is between the roadway and the sidewalk now on the school side of the street and widen out the paved area in there to be able to provide parking on one side of the roadway. And then widen out the uh, sidewalk a little bit as well, so that there would be a wider sidewalk for people to walk on. The sidewalk is already elevated a little bit from the roadway. Uh, if you've driven through there, you've probably experienced how it kind of slopes up from the road uh, to the sidewalk. So there could be curving installed and the sidewalk is already elevated there a little bit, which helps with the um, expansion of the road in that area. And then also installing, as I mentioned before, the dynamic um, signs, so that as someone presses the button, there would be what are called rectangular rapid flash beacons or RRFBs. So you would press the pedestrian push button and it would start activating lights on the top of the pedestrian crossings to let someone know that someone is uh, crossing the roadway. And those could easily be controlled by the um, crossing guards as well during the morning arrival and dismissal periods, where the crossing guard could be the one pressing the button to alert traffic as they're about to cross a group um, over the roadway. And then also installing the um, the radar speed indications for the school zone, so that when the school zone is activated, it would be flashing um, with the speed of the roadway. Um, and then below it, you would also see the driver's speed as they're going through. And if the driver goes too far over the speed limit, it will start flashing slow down um, at them.
Um, and now.
Next question.
Yeah.
How, where are you planning on having the flashing crossing lights? And also, what is the um, the length of the, the speed zone? So for example.
Sure.
Um, Wakefield is at the top of the hill, so if you're coming up, I think people can't really see on the other side of it. And from my observation, there's a lot of speeding traffic that goes up and then sort of hits where a lot of the traffic and pedestrians are. So I'm just wondering, um, are those going to be mostly right at the, the school? Are they going to extend up to Wakefield?
Sure. So um, with this option that we are showing here with the circulation and what we'll get into in the following slide, uh, we're actually reducing down the number of pedestrian crossings a little bit. So there would be one right in front of the school, uh, basically where Bodwell Road is and where the school entrance is. We would have one crossing there with the, the flashing devices. Uh, we may well have some um, out on April Street as well. But right now, there is actually a signalized pedestrian crossing that is a little bit to the south of where um, the crosswalk is, right at the school driveway on April Street. Uh, so it's a full traffic signal there, where we would be looking to upgrade that traffic signal and encourage people to cross at that location instead. The one where people are crossing now, right in front of the school, um, you'll be able to see my, yeah, you can see my cursor on there. The one where people are crossing now. Um, it crosses basically to nothing. There's a landing on the other side, there's no ramp to it, though it's just a small patch of sidewalk there. Um, so it's really a crossing to nothing, so we're looking to encourage people to go further to the south um, and cross at that with an upgraded signal there. Uh, in terms of the speed signs, so for the school zone itself, the school zone has to be within two hundred feet of the school property. So that would be the area that is signed um, for that twenty mile per hour school zone. Uh, but in terms of those radar speed indications, you can actually install those quite far in advance to slow people down before they even get to this, the school zone. Uh, so that is an option and that's something that we will, as we move more into the formal design of it, look at where's the best location um, to have those to start slowing people down. Uh, but yeah, the school zone signage would be two hundred feet from the property line on April Street and on Charles Street. Good questions. Yes.
You may have mentioned that I, I missed that, but for adding a parking lane on one side of Charles Street, would that require narrowing the travel lanes that exist?
Yeah, so right now, the lanes, I believe there is at fifteen or sixteen feet in the code. Yeah, so the question was. Yeah, so the question was whether the travel lanes would be getting narrower on Charles Street to be able to accommodate, um, the, um, the parking on one side. So yes, they would be getting a little bit narrower partly because right now there are no shoulders that are straight. So it's just the center line. So we would actually have a shoulder line straight so that the remaining area would be for, um, parking. But essentially, the, we'd get the additional width by taking out that grass buffer that's there now and assigning that to the roadway for parking.
One more. Would the, does this proposal include, and I forget the term, what you call them, like the curb bump outs by crossings and driveways to keep it from parking too close?
Yes, it does actually. And, uh, you can see this on here a little bit at the Dana Road intersection, um, where there is a bump out there. So right now, it comes in at an angle and it's a very wide sweeping turn. Uh, so we would look at installing curb bump outs there. Same on, um, at some of the other crossings as well, um, to install those curb bump outs. And then as we kind of talk about, um, how circulation would work on the site itself, um, there are really two different alternatives that we're considering here for how the, uh, the school could be laid out. So one option, and Lee looks all ready to talk about.
I feel like I, can you hear me? I feel like I need to make an explanation. Obviously, we're in the early stages, but, um, part of our job is to look at both kind of renovation and addition, utilizing some of the existing school and adding on to it. And some of it is building a brand-new school. And, um, we asked our traffic engineer because there's not a lot of land, land here, you know? We have to use it very wisely. So, um, we asked them to look at two options. One is if we did a renovation and addition. So the one on the left basically takes just the classroom part, not this one in front. This would come down, but tries to renovate that and then adds the square footage we need in a new building beyond it. I want you to know that the new program through the MSBA is literally twice the square footage about as the program you have now in the school. Because we have so many things that are deficits, not proper size, you've seen the gymnasium, but like special education, everything else, that the existing school, even if we were just to renovate, it wouldn't hold it at all. The half is, it wouldn't be big enough for the new program in the building. So we have one where we take half of the existing school and renovate it with classrooms. And then we add on what we need next to it. As you can see, that strategy, because this is a one-story school, is, you, well, you know what I'm going to say. A one-story school takes up a lot of land. If I take the exact same square footage and go two or whatever stories, it's much more compact. The second scheme, and you can see a lot more green on it, a lot more space, is because we're building a taller school, a couple of stories, maybe, maybe more. We have to look at different options. And we wanted our traffic engineer to look at both of those so it can inform us what kind of building design is most advantageous for everything. That's my explanation. Does that make sense?
Thank you, Lee. You did a much better job explaining that than I probably would have. So great job. Um, so as we go to this image over here on the left-hand side, that's really representing what would happen if a portion of the school were to be taken down. Uh, and the main area where the classroom spaces would be renovated and then in addition would be put on the back of the building, which is really the only way to fit an addition on the site right now and still keep the school open at the same time. So as we had discussed in kind of our goals, one of the goals that we had was trying to accommodate as much onsite queuing and parking as possible to help alleviate some of that spillback into the neighborhood. So in this first option here, we've created this kind of loop area for, um, drop-off to occur in the morning, which also is lined with parking spaces along the outside that allow for vehicles to park there in the afternoon to get some of that parking off the street and onto the school site so that people are parking there instead. Uh, we needed to accommodate at least a hundred and twenty-five parking spaces for the staff and for, um, yeah, I just want a second. Um, for staff parking onto the site. So that's what you're seeing in both of these two options, um, for, you know, similarity purposes to understand how much space the parking takes up and everything. Um, hundred and twenty-five staff parking spaces on the site. In this, uh, renovation option here, um, we have the buses, school buses coming in off of April Street up here and then coming out, uh, back onto April Street. In the option over here where there's a new school, you can see that we can create a much longer area for parents to be able to pull in and drop off. Uh, and the school, the building itself could be pushed back further. So with this option, we've created, um, an area here where buses would still pull in off of April Street. They would drop off over on the side of the building here and then they would be able to pull out and continue down, um, through that drop-off area here. Uh, and with that, we've got the parking, similar area, but a hundred and twenty-five parking spaces there. Did you have a question on?
Yes.
The phone.
So a couple of questions or concerns on this. Right now, when you pull into the rolling drop-off, there are places along the side that people park in the morning and in the afternoon. They're not supposed to in the morning at all, you know? Um, or as far as I'm aware, they're not supposed to. You're putting parking spots along the rolling drop-off in these two plans. That concerns me that they're going to be used in the morning and will still have the same pedestrian safety issues that we have now. Um, that's the first thing I see. And the second, I'm concerned of how, where that crosswalk is right at the entrance and exit driveway.
You're talking about this one where you're down here?
Yeah. Like I would, it makes, you know, because people come in and out, like the rolling drop-off is going to be running. And right now, when we try to pull out the end in the morning, the crossing guard is there, she's blocking the crosswalk constantly so it backs up the rolling drop-off. That's going to be the same. So those are a couple of things. And the third thing I have is, are we going to make it so we can only pull in to the drop-off from one direction and out from one direction and make it actually work? Like today, you're not supposed to take a left turn, but I see ten people every morning take a left turn. So I still not, I see nothing that fixes any of those. I see nothing that fixes any of those.
Yeah, so, um, to answer those questions, um, so yes, I'm going to kind of go in reverse order only because I think that that's the easiest order. Uh, so to answer your first question, yes, we are proposing to allow full access and EBRs here. So turns would be allowed, lefts, rights, but we do anticipate that that would have some type of control there. And so the reason that we've shown, um, the crosswalk in this location is really to be able to accommodate people walking from both directions and maintain the most continuous play space in this area. But it does not necessarily have to be there. Uh, and you can see over in this image where we do have the sidewalk coming up through here. Uh, so there is a potential to create an alternative crosswalk there, mid-block crosswalk in that area. Uh, and that's something that we will look at, like where are the best places to put all of this? Right now, we're really in, what's the best traffic circulation and flow? And then we'll get into more detail on the, um, where all these crossings will actually be and how they will be controlled. Yep, question?
So my question is, uh, for right now, when the kids get out at two forty-five, the driveway, you can, you cannot park in the driveway right now.
Correct.
So, but now with this new design, parents will be able to drive. And typically, the signs say that people should not leave the driveway until three o'clock, even though I still see parents leave when, you know, kids are dismissed. But would that be changed? So, because again, right now, I feel that if the sign says nobody should be leaving the driveway, um, this area here until three o'clock when the kids are out.
Right, so with these options, we would have, um, your parking lot over here and up here that would be able to accommodate like your staff and visitor parking for like that midday parking stuff. But for the parents who are pulling in, what we would end up doing is having, uh, similarly, an eight-foot parking lane. And then adjacent to that, um, we'd have a twelve-foot lane in each direction through this area here. And then that would widen out of in this area here where it's coming around that turn.
So you would have kids coming out from school.
So parents would be able to pull out as once they get their child, they can pull out.
In theory, there should not be cars. Cars will be allowed and kids will be out as well.
Right, and we will have, this, this entire area would be lined with sidewalks so that the kids should be walking on the sidewalk and not into the roadway to get to their vehicles, so that the cars can keep coming out. That's correct.
I guess the only other comment I have is that, um, for the parking on Charles Street, I think as you noted, that a lot of cars are coming from the south and the west. And then when those cars park on the road, they tend to make U-turns to want to go back. And so I'm hoping that there's some thoughtfulness around trying to, um, alleviate that, that the contributions that that makes to traffic and safety as well because that, that can be a real problem.
Yeah, we could definitely take a, a look at that to see if there's options that we can look at for how we prevent some of that U-turn to happen. Short of putting a, you know, a median or something, which you don't want to do for neighborhood access, um, there's really no way to a hundred percent prevent it. Uh, but we can look for ways to certainly discourage it. Uh, there will be parking allowed still on Dana Road and Bodwell Road. Again, we are recommending parking on only one side of those roads as well, but not changing the geometry of the roadways. But just, you know, assigning those so that they are parking on only one side. So if parents do need to reverse direction when they're leaving, they have that option of parking on those roadways as well. Yep.
I had a question. I wasn't sure. Were you able to consider doing like a loop from Charles Street through the lot? Like on that sand side down to here? So to make it a one-way?
We considered that.
Yeah, we did consider that. Um, and the reason that we did not end up there, um, there's, there's a few reasons why we didn't. But for the main reason is having all of that traffic EBRs onto April Street, uh, where that's a high-volume, high-speed roadway. We didn't want that being the, the main point where traffic is all, um, coming out for that parent traffic. So we did consider it, but from,
Not a light?
Uh, if a light could be allowed there, uh, but it likely wouldn't actually need any warrants for installation of a traffic signal just because, um, when you're looking at just morning arrival and PM dismissal, it's not enough hours of the day, um, for the volumes to meet a warrant for installation of a signal. So it would probably be something that would have to be controlled by an officer on a regular basis. Uh, so that creates a kind of ongoing cost to the community to have, um, an officer out there. So that is one of the reasons why we did not recommend it there.
But just following with that, though, people will be going down Charles and then if they have to get back on April, they will just need to turn right. So there is still going to be traffic.
There will still definitely be traffic.
Just a thought, though, because it is not eliminating the problem. The cars who need to go back on April will still go down this way, right? And, and then end up taking a right turn or a left turn depending. So it could still create problems. It's just a different area. So it's just going to be a little bit further down.
Yeah, so if we put the access on Charles Street, yes, there will be some traffic that is still going to want to go to April Street because there's people who live out in that area. Uh, the difference is if the driveway is on April Street, then we're talking about a hundred and ninety-five cars coming out onto April Street. If the driveway is over on Charles Street, then it may be, we, I don't know, the number's right offhand, but it could be twenty-five, fifty cars that end up going back around to April Street. So it's a, a much lower number of vehicles that would go with that.
I, I see your, your eyes and, and your reaction to that. I will say that, um, when we first came here, I thought, why are they blocking off April Street? Why don't they let people flow through? And then I started talking to teachers and they all said, stay away from April Street. It's, it's dangerous. And then I started talking to other community meetings and I keep hearing the same thing. Then we went to our, um, our, um, traffic engineer and asked them about the speeds and the walking and the, and the cars and all of that. And, um, you don't have to believe everything. But what, what the message, as an, almost a bystander who's just trying to make a building, is that April is scary. And if we can keep it, if we can keep this safe school flow, and I know that you live on Charles Street, so I understand. But if we can keep this, this safe, if we can improve it and keep that flow there, um, that's the recommendation so far that we've been hearing. And I'll let our traffic engineer talk to that because, because it sounds good. But everything I've been hearing tells me, has been telling me, be careful. That's what I've been told. So does anybody else have any, right, yes, I noticed you had your hand up. Here you go.
Hi, I forgot to say that I'm also telling maybe never I'm an extended-day teacher. So, um, one of my questions is I see that the play space has been reduced in these pictures in terms of the playground, um, and will have many more students to share that play space. The other question is I'm really glad that you noticed, um, the, um, the, the elimination of the sidewalk space on Branson Stana Road. I'm wondering if you'll be including, building curbs so that the cars will know where to stop and they won't infringe on the sidewalk area. Um, and then also, my other question was, you mentioned about bikes. Um, I don't see a bike lane on any of these streets. So I just was wondering what your plan was for that. Thank you.
Yeah, so the bikes part of it, we have not gotten, uh, that far down the road on it. But we are considering a wider sidewalk that would allow for, um, shared use for bikes and pedestrians. Uh, and yes, we are, uh, proposing, and I know it's kind of hard to see it from these graphics, but like right here at Dana Road, you can see kind of here's where the existing curb is, or I shouldn't even call it a curb because it's not a curb, but there's where the edge of pavement is. And we would be looking to have a, a bump out here and install curbing, um, that would really, um, encourage people not to park so close to the roadways. And we would be looking at doing that for, um, all of the pedestrian crossing locations. So wherever we do end up with a crosswalk on Charles Street, we would stop the parking short of that and install a curb bump out so that, um, not only does it discourage people from parking so close to the intersection, but it also gets the pedestrian out where they can be seen around those parked vehicles on the roadway. So yes, those are things that we were, we would look to do as we get further into the schematic design process. And this is really for more of a feasibility-type study to look at, how can we get all this to work on the site, um, to make the traffic flow work?
So I want to, One second?
Go ahead.
Please leave it there. We don't have to go further or faster. Um, I want to, I want to address or thank you for your question because there's a reason why we're showing you this. It's not just traffic, is it? It's not just, um, it starts to show, when we show the option, which we have to look at for renovation and addition, and you can see the footprint of that on that site and you see the amount of play space that is left, you already noticed because that's what you're looking at. And then you see when you do a newer building that's compact and a little taller and, and, you know, designed without, you know, that, how much play space you have. You actually have enough play space for that number of kids in the field and all of that. It's just in a different location. Do you know what I mean? And we're doing this on purpose. We're starting to let you see the ramifications of making choices. So the building has a lot to do, well, look at it right here. One building design versus the other building design, one of them gets how many cars park, you know, off the street? Like even in a queuing situation? The one on the right, you can get all of those cars in the morning and there won't be any on the street at all because they get to line up and they have a longer queuing line. Those are the kinds of things we're trying to do. We're trying to get them off the streets. You know what I mean? And your, so your question is right on. We want, we have to and want to have enough play space and that's the challenge and you recognize it. Thank you.
But we also need to think about costs. I'm assuming that probably the newer building will probably be, I'm, I'm just assuming, probably more expensive than, so it's just something that in my, in my, in my mind, I'm thinking, yes, that new building sounds great, but then my back mind already starts thinking about what about the money, how much?
You'd be surprised.
So I'm just, I'm just, that was just a thought I had.
So that is the kind of stuff we'll be following up with next. But we're, right now, we're showing you both options. But you'll be surprised how much an existing building that doesn't work well or needs to be completely gutted and completely redone. or needs to be completely gutted and completely redone costs compared to building something new, clean and off-site. And you'd also be surprised when we run the numbers, I'm just gonna throw this out for those who care, operating costs in the future for energy and things like that. When you have an old building that's, this building actually does not have insulation in the walls, believe it or not. When you have an old building like that and you're talking about energy and how much your taxpayers are paying for the next 40 years, we run those numbers too. So you get to actually see in 20 years which is the best deal. Because we want to give you value. So please trust that we'll do that. Next. Yes. Oh, here. Catch.
Yeah, Ray Porter, I live on Franklin Street, which is the far end of where the school is. That's, what's that school down there?
Wood End.
Wood End. Wood End School. So they have a couple of neighbors. And they do bike, which is a pretty good three-quarter mile bike ride. The sidewalks. So sidewalk improvements, I know you're not there in design, but rather than bike lanes, which was mentioned, expecting kids would use the sidewalks is, is the preferred approach there. Kids are off the street. Makes it a little safer to bike. And if the sidewalks are maintained, as a sidewalk went in all the way down to Grove Street, originally was challenged as being a sidewalk to nowhere. No, it's a safe route for kids to get to school by bike is what it really is. It's also an avenue for neighbors to walk dogs and for a whole lot of purposes.
Are you pointing at somebody? No. Okay. So this is something I know that Rebecca wants to do. She's gonna take you through like two or three options and kind of grade them. There are kind of grades for them. And I would actually ask for this one, just to kind of sit back like you're watching a bad movie and, and watch her go through and, and keep her eye on those, those X's and zeros. Basically she'll have three different things. She'll have an X, which means this is poor condition. She'll have a circle, which is kind of neutral, like hey, not bad, but not great. And then if she, when she, when she does get to a green, that means excellent for this site. And remember, we have conditions here that we have to deal with. So are you, is that okay? Can we sit back and enjoy?
Thank you. Yeah, so as we just said, this is exactly like watching a bad movie. So we did evaluate each one of these options. And what we were really trying to do is look at, we know what the two options that the architects are working on in terms of laying out how the school might look and how we accommodate traffic with those two options. So in this first one, this is the renovation option, where the front part of the building or what will be the front part of the building would be renovated and then the new building would be constructed in the back. And we looked at all of these options. And for each one of these, we looked at multiple iterations of traffic circulation and layout. And what we found was that this type of layout that you're seeing on the screen here is the one that worked the, the best from keeping the most play space on the site and keeping a continuous connection between the building and the play space so that kids aren't walking across the pickup and drop-off or across the parking lots to get to that play space. So we wanted to have those continuous. So with this first option here, you can see that we have accommodated 125 staff parking vehicles on the site. In the morning for the, that rolling drop-off that we were talking about, we can essentially accommodate 18 vehicles on the site. And one of the reasons is that with this option, right here is where the main entrance would be. And so kids would be walking up this walkway and then here into the main entrance. So right in here is that area that would be our unloading zone. And so there's very little space from where this unloading zone would be back to the roadway. And that's why we can only get about 18 vehicles in the queue there in the morning for that rolling drop-off. But since we have all of this space to work with in the afternoon for parking, we are able to accommodate 44 vehicles on the site for parking. And when we look at how much traffic might actually spill out onto Charles Street, there are potentially 40 vehicles that might spill out onto Charles Street that would need to be accommodated along there for parking. Or, sorry, this would be what would be created, not what would spill over. The spill over is actually higher than that. So with this, the layout we were looking at, there would be 40 parking spaces that would be created on Charles Street that could accommodate some additional. So some of the things that we, we were looking at obviously were, you know, pedestrian accommodation. How would this work for pedestrians walking through school, walking around on the site itself? And then how much play space would it leave? And how would that connect to the building? And then we looked at whether there was enough parking for the staff and how that parking could be laid out. And then the last one was, you know, improving that queuing in the morning with the rolling drop-off and then improving the parking situation in the afternoon, trying to get as much as we could onto the site. So in order to create a space for play on the site here that would be large enough to be useful and connected to the site, really the only area that we could accommodate parking would be in this kind of long row of parking here along the side of the building. And so that would create sort of like a dead-end area where vehicles would drive in and if they, you know, got to the end and didn't find a parking space, they'd have to turn around and come back down. Which isn't really a great way to lay out the parking with that type of one-way circulation there. In terms of play space, you obviously have seen the play space is very limited on the site with this type of, of layout. We really only get this area here as a large usable space for running around. In terms of providing enough staff parking, there is enough, but there isn't quite the layout we would want there to be. For the pedestrian accommodations with this type of layout, we may get some parents who are, you know, just jutting across in this area here to go pick up their kids where the door is located over here, where parents may have just crossed rather than walking all the way around because of where the door is located. And it does create some conflict there between the pedestrians and the parent traffic that's coming in and out as well. And in terms of improving AM queuing, we're really not improving the queuing a whole lot there because there's a short stacking area before we hit the roadway. And we're only getting 44 vehicles on the site. So not really meeting our needs for what we saw in the afternoon. So this one here is showing you what it could potentially look like with a new building. And that being pushed back up towards Havrell Street, a little bit further in this area, having that parent pickup and drop-off area through here, staff parking off to the side. And we're evaluating it with the same criteria here. So here, in terms of onsite parking, still providing 125 parking spaces for the staff over here that's separated from the rest of the parking. In the morning for that onsite queue storage, because the front door of the building would be over here, our unloading area would be right in this area here. So that would create all of this space for queued vehicles. So we can actually accommodate 34 vehicles in that queue in the morning. And for anyone who was here two weeks ago, you may remember that we had counted 39 vehicles in that storage queue. And that is based on much less efficient operations of an unloading area where you saw that there was this crosswalk here that was preventing some of those vehicles from actually being able to exit. So in this case, because there, it will be much more separated, once these vehicles are unloaded, they will have all the space to be able to pull out so that that will be able to run much more efficiently. So we think we can actually accommodate all those vehicles on the site without any spillback. In the afternoon, we will have space for 56 vehicles to be able to park along this other area around the driveway there. And then we'll also have the additional 40 vehicles with those spaces that are created along Charles Street. So for this one, we still have the issue where there may be some parents that do cross in the walkway here to go up and meet their, their children. But because of where this doorway is located in relation to the sidewalks, we're likely to get a lot less of that happening in this option than in the previous option. This one does create this very large usable play space in here for, you know, gym, athletic events. And then it also creates these little pockets of play space around the building in here and here where some additional smaller play areas could be created. In terms of adequate staff parking, we do have 125 parking spaces. It is designed in a circular pattern here, which provides much better flow for people as they're going through. And then for the last one, in terms of minimizing queues, we can get all of those queues in the morning to be onsite and we're creating much more parking on the site as well in the afternoon.
No questions?
Yeah.
You can go ahead first.
See your questions.
You go.
You had mentioned some of the green space in this around the side and the back of the building. Given the concerns related to traffic on Havrell, but that that could be a usable green space, would there be some sort of barrier that would be built there so that there could be some natural buffer between that usable space and traffic?
If there is room or need for play space there, and right now we're actually leaning towards not having play space on that busier street. If there was, we would fence it. But as you can see, there's a choice of where you place the building. If you push it in, you, you get maybe a good play space there and then you have to kind of protect it. If you push the building over a bit, then you get more space on the other side where it's safer and better, which is where we're leaning right now. And I bet it's where you would be leaning too, I think.
I just asked because she had mentioned that. So I just wasn't sure.
So I would say it's really important for us to find any inch of play space we can that's safe. And we will be shifting things to make sure it's in the right location.
Couple of pieces. One, the first question is about the drop-off area. I, I lived in North Carolina for a while and dealt with the school there. And they had a circular driveway, kind of like that. But they had a very clearly defined, you know, covered area. You couldn't drop off a floor. You couldn't drop off after. And there was teachers out there for each car. And I didn't know if that was something that was there so that that drop-off area would be clearly defined so someone's not dropping off halfway down the driveway or going through and, you know, parking the other side. That's one. The second is you mentioned earlier that the buses will go in from Havrell Street and then cross through to go out the other way. If that can be clearly defined, because that feels like they're, I mean, I can't see where, I guess they're driving over that red spot.
Yeah, so the idea is that this would be some type of drivable surface and that obviously hasn't been engineered yet. But it would be, you know, mainly used for pedestrian use. And then during when the morning arrival is occurring in the afternoon dismissal, those buses would be allowed to drive across to be able to come out.
Good eye. I feel like that would be, you know, in both instances, morning and evening, that could cause a lot of traffic. Is that bus, you know, that's gonna get stuck and other bus is gonna be trying to come in as the cars are moving through or something like that?
Yeah, so in the afternoon particularly, when, when people are parked around there, that would be something that's controlled where the buses are unloaded and somebody's out there to stop traffic, release the buses and then traffic can start flowing. Again, in the, the morning, when there's already gonna be staff out there collecting cars, you know, collecting the kids as they're coming out of cars and everything, when the buses come, they, it would, traffic would have to be stopped one at a time as each bus comes because they're not all going out in one rolling queue. But it would need to be controlled, yes.
I, I just wanted to say that it's not fixed where the buses are, but it's very important that we separate the buses and the cars in the next step. Because you don't have that now. Luckily, you only have about four buses. So in the afternoon, they, they just need a place to park. So maybe there's a way to do it. But there's, there's a way to maybe do that better. I, I said good eye, like good eye, because when I look at that, I see that it's, there's a reason why it's red, right? Because that's a conflict. We want as few conflicts as possible, right? Even if we can explain it, doing that.
And that, like we said, this doesn't have to be where the buses are, but we do want to separate them in some way. There could be a hybrid of these two options where potentially, you know, we showed them the first option, the buses coming in here and out here. Maybe that's the option that we end up with for the buses in the end. Maybe we're creating a bus, you know, the bus loading zone becomes in here or something instead. And we push a little bit more parking out into the neighborhood. There are different options that we could certainly do, but we do want to provide a separate area for the buses that is designated buses only.
Well, one thing that I'd like to just mention is as we're looking at this, I want everybody to remember, we're just starting the design here. So this looks very finished, if you will, already. Like we know where the parking is. We know the sidewalks. I, I don't want everybody to think that that's the answer here. Like this is giving us a diagram. That new building is kind of just a box up there. We're still trying to figure out, does that box get a little bit bigger, a little bit smaller, things of that nature? So even though this is very well defined, it's not finalized. I don't want people to think that this is the, you know, this is what's gonna be built in two and a half years. You know, we, we, we've got to waze off before we get to that point. We want to hear your feedback. We appreciate your feedback. And there's some things that haven't worked out yet, the, the drop-off loop, this is one option. It may look just like that. It may look a little bit different, but we're, we're continuing to work through it. So just, when everybody's looking at this, just try and keep that in mind that this is just diagrammatical. We, we're just starting to look at the, the building itself. And we, we can't just wait till the building is completely done and then start thinking about traffic or thinking about walking or thinking about the play area. So we're thinking about all these things at the same time. And they are gonna morph and, and one is gonna feed off the other and we're gonna think we have a solution for the traffic and then we're gonna realize the playground doesn't work and we're gonna make some adjustments, things like that. So there is gonna be a continued morphing of this, a continued adjustment for quite, quite some time. We, we are getting it to a point down the road, a year from now or so, where things aren't gonna be changing as much. It's gonna be more the details, the, the slight adjustments to the design. But right now, this is just to try and give it to people in overview, that 10,000-foot view, not, not that this is the final view.
Yeah, and part of this is also to hear the feedback from the neighbors as well.
Absolutely.
We, we want to know what your thoughts are on these different options. So all the holes that you're poking, we, we welcome those, even though it might sound like we're arguing a little bit in our responses to you. We want you to poke those holes. We want you to bring up those issues so that as we do move through the design, wherever we're finding it, we're coming up with something that's really gonna work for everyone. So don't be shy and we can comment or anything.
I have a few questions actually. I guess one is when you mentioned that there will be staff out there helping, I'm not fully sure, but I think some people in the room help at drop-off. And I feel like, I think it's under the kindness of their heart. Like I'm not sure our teachers are even paid to be out there in the morning. Just something in, not in the afternoon. So just where you say that there's going to be people, I do want you to be aware that maybe different towns are different or have different rules. I'm not even sure that that's something our teachers are actually paid to do so. And sometimes it's varying numbers. There's one person here. I always see every morning helping with it. I, I don't know if she'll be here forever. So that's one comment. Another one is where we're concerned about buses. I'm definitely concerned about putting all of our eyes here in this, so just for the record. I have a lot of concerns about that. Even concerns about the entire town voting for this project if we put all of our eyes here. So some very like big picture concerns on that. And one more, I was not here early on. But in the plan where we renovate, do the renovations need to happen over the summer? And then the school needs to be ready for the children at the end of August? Because that also concerns me. So...
So one of the things that the MSA requires us to do on any project is to do a renovation-only option, a renovation addition option and a new option. So we have to do at least one of each of those. So that's one of the reasons why we're looking at that. We're looking to see what the ability is there. Cost is gonna drive that. Educational program is gonna drive that. Traffic, everything is gonna drive that. But we have to do it. And, and it's just a good practice because sometimes people come to a project preconceived notion that, hey, new is the only option. It's what we're gonna do. And when you go through the whole process and you see what the ed program is and you see where the costs are, maybe the renovation option is the better option. I, I've been with a town where they did two different middle schools. The first school was a renovation addition. Everybody automatically thought the second school was gonna be a renovation addition. We went through the same process. The second school, the new option was the better option. So that's what they did. So it's not even just the community. It's actually the actual individual project, the site and the educational program that's gonna actually drive us to what that correct solution was at the end. And as far as the renovations go, if we were to renovate it, it's not something that could be done in just the summertime. So in that situation, we'd probably be looking at some sort of completion of part of the new building, moving of students. So it would be a longer construction period. Again, something we would take into consideration when we're evaluating it.
Just to answer one of the...
Just to answer one of those questions too, Jen. So our staff would be available first thing in the morning, but right now, we have twenty-four doors to man, so that's currently their morning duty. So part of our project is looking at access points and how do we make sure that students never want our safe access in the building, but also leaving, and that would alleviate a little bit of that problem. But I also agree and think that part of that could be have overhang, could we have other parts out front so that it's easier to access in the morning? But a lot of those systematic pieces will come kind of in time. We're talking about them now, but next, you know, two years or so, I think they definitely have to be fine-tuned more to.
When we do talk about staffing, not all of it necessarily has to be teacher staffing too. Some of that can be crossing guard staff as well for some of these things that are happening. But one of the reasons why we're looking at parking in the afternoon as opposed to a rolling pickup is the staffing needs because staffing with a rolling pickup is a lot higher. And we can probably speak to one situation too in Swambska where we're working together where they have a very strong teachers' union and adding even one minute to the school schedule is like out of the question. So, you know, that's one where we're looking at potentially using crossing guards to help with that pickup time in the afternoon and some of that staffing stuff. But creating the rolling drop-off in the morning, there's certainly areas that are created up around the front of the school where kids can be held outside so that you don't have as much of a need for staffing in that time. And then once the doors open, the kids go into the building. Right now, the way that it's working, there's, at eight-ten in the morning, parents are allowed to start arriving with their kids. Prior to that, there's no staff onsite, there's no oversight at all. And then at eight-fifteen, the doors open. So similar could things, thing could happen where parents could drop off in that few five minutes. And then we want to give a good ten-minute period before the, like, bell rings and classes actually start to be able to get all those kids dropping off and parents to clear out and everything. So right now, that's what there is at eight-twenty-five, bell rings, classes start. So we're working at similar. So similar staffing needs in the morning, and by doing the parking in the afternoon, we're trying to reduce down those needs so that we don't have teachers standing at every door. Their, you know, kids are coming out in the front meeting their parents, and then staff can be released. I think you have one other question, but if a multiple answers.
I don't know if we talked about it earlier, but just the thought of whether all of RISE will be sent here to kill them or not.
So that's one of the things that we're considering. So since we're in the feasibility stage, we're looking at, is there a way to actually accommodate all of RISE on the school site? Obviously, we're tasked with the parking and traffic component of it. We're tasked with, you know, architecturally can fit the program.
I would just also remember, you need to pass a vote too, a town vote also.
Right, right. And that's our, so our job, our job is to, is to show you both, design for both, to give you the information, to listen to your wonderful superintendent and everyone else who cares, and to show options for one and the other. And we actually are doing that. And so there's those options. There's no, and I want, so that's one. But we have to solve problems. And so what we do is we look at, if you did everything, how could we best solve that? That's our job. And then we show you what it's like without that. I wanted to say the thing about the coveredness, because, the covered entrance, because most certainly, there will be a covered area in front of the school and possibly even along the drop-off. I like how you recognized that that covered area could mark where you drop off so that, you know, so that everybody knows that there's like a designated zone. You pull up six cars, they drop off, they keep, you know, that's how it works, especially with less oversight. Right now, the kids show up and they're outside, and if they continue to show up and be outside for a while, we want to protect them from the elements, even though they're hardy New Englanders. And I really, one of the most welcoming aspects of this building, although it's too close to the road, is that idea of that garden covered area out front where everybody kind of talks and everything. And I think it would be nice for us to maintain that idea.
So just a couple of quick things to kind of run through for sort of how we see this happening, what the impacts might look like. So this is really just looking at the one option with the new building, partly because when you look at the options with a renovation, you see queues that are still extending way past Wakefield Street, even longer than they are today. So what we're seeing here is, this is what the morning would look like if we were to have the new building here with this drop-off area here. That would be essentially twelve vehicles that could unload at one time. And then we could accommodate thirty-four vehicles onsite with potentially eleven vehicles spilling over if we're considering the same number that are queued right now at the peak time and then increasing that proportionally for a four-hundred-and-fifty-five student enrollment instead of four-hundred-and-twenty. So that's what we would be looking at for a potential spillover. But as we did mention, we do anticipate that this facility would have more efficient operations with that drop-off, so we may get a reduced queue compared to what we're seeing here. And with this, there will be parking that's still allowed along Charles Street. We haven't shown that those vehicles are parked there in this image. The parents will still be allowed to park in the neighborhood if they wanted to and then walk their kids up to the front door at all times. And then just kind of understanding the afternoon and what we would see here.
This is morning still.
What was that?
Still morning.
Oh, sorry, this is the morning pre-K, sorry. So with the morning pre-K, a rolling drop-off in the morning with the pre-K students really wasn't desirable. A lot of, right now, people are walking their pre-K students in. So we looked at what would happen if we were to have, for the pre-K, parents park and continue to walk in their students. With the, this is with the full one-hundred-and-eighty student enrollment that we're showing here. And what we show is that fifty-six vehicles could be accommodated on the site itself along that drop-off loop, and then another twenty-five vehicles would spill over onto Charles Street, which are still mostly, you know, right within that school zone area of the school. So a walkable distance for a pre-K.
So that's your, that's your total expected load for pre-K in the morning?
Correct, with the one-hundred-and-eighty-year-old enrollment.
With the larger, okay.
Yeah.
Which is good to know.
And then when we look at the afternoon dismissal for the pre-K, we would be looking to have that same twelve vehicles stacked here that could be picked up.
There's something funny going on.
So this is what would happen if we introduced a rolling queue for the pre-K.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry.
So let's skip that because we don't have to talk about a pre-K queue because everything we know is that when you have a three-year-old, especially mine in RISE, you're going to walk that child to the door most likely. That's probably the case.
So we did take a look at if there was a rolling drop-off. Obviously, this would mean more staffing because you can't just drop a pre-K student off to the front door and expect them to hang around out there. But for this one, if we did do it, there would be roughly a six-vehicle queue in that drop-off area. So it could clear a lot faster, but then again, you're talking about pre-K kids.
I do want to mention that they walk.
Pre-K walks?
In the middle of the winter, if it's snowing or raining, I even question if parents, you know, do they really want to walk with someone who's, you know, a three, maybe a baby in a stroller? It's a driveway. So I question and I wonder, I don't know, just wonder, maybe they're rolling.
I know we have some pre-K parents in the area.
Yeah, so I, I wonder.
Not a pre-K parent right now, but, you know, my kids were pre-K basically when COVID hit. And so then when we went back to preschool, we had, we were at the ready line, and we had to do rolling drop-off. The kids actually enjoyed that more than being locked in. So I don't know if that's a benefit at some time down the road or not, but they enjoyed it. They always, actually, a lot of times, it was easier getting them out of the car, surprisingly, than walking them in and having four-hundred hugs for twenty minutes before you can leave. They kind of understand that this car isn't lying, you have to keep going. So I, you know, but I'm not a pre-K parent now, so this is kind of relevant to me at that point, but.
It's interesting because if we do have a rolling drop-off for pre-K, if that's what you end up deciding to do, it's very easy because there's so many less of them than there are the K through five who have already left. So it would just roll in the morning and be easy-peasy if that's what you want. That, it's actually the easier solution for us.
Certainly, it's showing that as quickly as cars arrive in the morning, if you give them a ten-minute arrival window, then they will clear out. So you'd be able to accommodate all the vehicles arriving within the twelve-vehicle drop-off zone if you wanted to have a rolling drop-off in the morning. So this is looking at the afternoon conditions here for what that would look like. And because pre-K is dismissed first, this one is looking at the pre-K dismissal. So with that, there are fifty-three vehicles that are anticipated to be arriving, and all fifty-three of those vehicles could be accommodated on the site within this drop-off area for that pre-K. So parents could easily all park on the site itself for the pre-K. And one of the things that that does allow is that if a parent arrives early for the K through five, they can be parking out on the street, and this area can be reserved for pre-K only.
So are the other hundred kids that are being bused because they're more than two miles away? Or why is it only fifty-three?
Yeah, so I can actually go back to, it's back a little ways.
I just, I can walk through, I only have one pre-K kid.
It's not charted.
Yeah, I went past it. There we go. So in the morning, so this would be with one-hundred-and-sixty-five students in the morning, and I know there's one-hundred-and-eighty-five. Fifteen of them are enrolled in the afternoon program. So there is one afternoon classroom, and that's why that number becomes one-hundred-and-sixty-five. In the morning, there are thirty students that are anticipated to be in before-school program. Thirty-three roughly that are on special education. Buses are otherwise bused to the school because of where they live and the community outside of the busing radius. And then you have a five percent walking based on the number of kids that kind of live right immediately in that neighborhood that would be walking. Absentee rate is pretty close to five percent normally, so pretty limited reduction there. And then a ten percent reduction for siblings that are in the same household. And that's how that comes down to eighty-one in the morning. In the afternoon, you can see that there's a much larger number in the extended-day program, where fifty of those are in the extended-day program. And the number of students who are actually getting dismissed in the afternoon is lower as well because there's a morning program, and there's fifteen kids enrolled in the morning program. And then there's also a transitional program that ends a little bit earlier as well, where they, those students have a four-hour day instead of a six-hour day. And there's another fifteen enrolled in that as well. So that's kind of how we get to the number down here of only fifty-three vehicles that are picking up.
So the idea is that in that, in that diagram that you're showing, you're trying to accommodate at least fifty-three parked cars for pre-K in the afternoon. That's your vote, right?
There's one thing for preschool too, it kind of goes and shifts. So if they arrive at eight-twenty-five, that's kind of like the first bit. They drop the kids off and then they go. So it's not like your car's always there for an extended period of time. And the door stays open for a similar amount of time than it does for K through five. So it's not like the same vehicle the entire time waiting. Once they drop them off at the door, they go. So it is moving.
So yeah, this is showing afternoon, and I'm assuming all kids are getting picked up. They're all being dismissed at one time for the afternoon programs, and that all parents can park on the site itself. And then this one is showing for the K through five enrollment for the four-hundred-and-fifty-five students that could be accommodated. Did you have a question?
I have a general question.
Sure.
The land to the, on Charles Street to the right there, like by number three, it's woods now. Is there, yeah, is there a reason why that's not being used?
So we could potentially get used to it.
The reason we've been avoiding it, if you go look at it, it's extremely steep slope and a lot of grade. So because Charles, at that point, really slopes up. So when you look at it, yes, we think we can push it, like, like, straighten it out a bit. If we were to really try to come in on the edge, we, first of all, we'd take down a lot of trees, which we go through the process, a lot of mature trees. Second of all, there's a lot of grade there that we would probably have to put in walls, retaining walls and things like that in order to mediate that. We'll be looking at that because it is very valuable space. But right now, we're staying away from it with the idea that we may not be able to do it efficiently and cost-effectively. But we don't want to show you something like a promise like, hey, we got all this space. But not good eye because you know space when you see it. Valuable land.
So in this option, we're showing the afternoon dismissal. So with this one, as I mentioned before, everyone is parking, and they are walking to the front doors to pick up their students in the afternoon. And we would be able to accommodate fifty-six vehicles around this drop-off loop parking, as well as forty vehicles along this stretch of Charles Street and here between Wakefield Street and this little cut through up to Gavel Street. And then we would anticipate that another thirty-nine vehicles would be parking out onto Dana Road and Godwell Road as well. And we have shown potentially maintaining this parking area on Gavel Street that exists up there today could accommodate ten vehicles. That's something that would be looked at as we move through the design for whether or not it makes sense to maintain those parked vehicles up there or have them parked in the neighborhood. But you can essentially see from this figure in comparison to the one that we looked at last week is that the parking for the afternoon is extending about as far as it was or as it currently is into the neighborhoods. The big difference is it's all on one side of the street. So by creating this long loop here on the site for vehicles to park, we can get parking to be on one side of the street only and have that access for vehicles to actually be able to get through.
But how do you get this only on one side of the street? Dana, Dana Street is supposed to be one side of the street right now. It is not. So, I mean, I don't, you can do whatever you want, but it's not going to make people not do it. It's just like, you're not supposed to make a U-turn on the Dana Street. So a lot of people come out, because they're not allowed to take a left turn, they go make a U-turn. And most of them can't make a U-turn, and it's up to be a three-point, four-point, five-point turn. So, like, and, and a lot of times, because, you know, part of it is like coming around that corner because I do rolling drop-off. And I go down Dana Street and out Pearl Street so I can circle around. But I can't make it down Dana Street. You know, there's people coming the other direction. They don't realize it's still supposed to be two ways. Now, there's all kinds of issues on Dana Street.
Yeah, so there are a lot of different options that we can engineer for Dana Road and Godwell Road. Obviously, we haven't done that yet. We're kind of looking at general circulation, what could happen on here. And then we, in the next step, look at the how to make it happen. So we will, as we move through the process, look at strategies for Dana Road and Godwell Road too, for what could be accommodated there. Obviously signage is one of them, striping as well so that it's clearly obvious where you can and cannot park. Potentially creating something similar to on Charles Street where you have designated striped parking spaces and people know that's a parking area, and the other side is not. But there are a lot of different things that we can look at to do on those roadways. But this is just kind of showing you how would it fit, how far back would it extend? What would that look like generally in the neighborhood, and does this seem feasible? Because we want to understand from all of you, does this seem something reasonable? If you're the parent who's parking up here, is this a reasonable walk for you to get to the school? Yep, did you have a question?
I don't know how feasible this is, but there's, there's a pretty good-sized parking area at the church. And I've, I've used in the past, access isn't great. And I've, I've used in the past, access isn't great, but with improved access and a partnership, official partnership with church, perhaps this clears out a lot of parking areas. But it's, it's ownership is property, right?
You cut through one of the, so it's kind of cut through that other non-church.
No, there, there is, there's actually a path.
But is it technically just owned by, no?
Yeah, exactly.
It might be double, I mean.
Yeah, it might be both. I know, it's just an idea, but something you might want to write down in your book.
Are you still allowing your children to come down? Yeah, actually, that's a good point. So we, I didn't mention that. So we would be creating a nice wide multi-use path that connects all the way here from April Street all the way down through to Charles Street so that parents can walk in if they're walking their kids to school through that area. And kids can bike on that too. So it would be multi-use so that it would be wide enough to accommodate two-way walking and biking.
So the town staff last week, it's PTTF, it's Parking, Transportation, Task Force. It's police, fire, engineering, DPW, some other town hall staff. And that was actually brought up, the church. The problem is the path is actually owned by the hospice house next door. So one of our brainstorming things may be coming up with some sort of plan to reach out to both of them to see if that could be additional parking.
Here we go. Oh, thank you. Is the improvements to the sidewalk going to be particularly on Charles just for one side? Or would you improve the sidewalk on, on both sides?
So we don't have to touch the sidewalk on the other side to, to make this accommodation for the, that lane. But obviously, the sidewalks are still poor while in the area. So it would definitely be a recommendation to upgrade.
I live on the other side.
Any other questions, comments, feedback that you want to give?
I wanted to say a couple of things. I don't know how my.
Yes, absolutely.
We did hear a few things.
We have one.
We did, okay, questions. We did hear a few things today that we're not going to put down and say no. Your idea, bringing up the idea of going through the whole site, coming out Charles, I, coming out April, we don't want to be closed-minded on that. We should look at that again and really say, be able to say, this is why, or this is yet, this is why it's a good idea, or this is why it's a bad idea.
Or April to Charles.
Or the other way around. Whatever it is, we just want, we want to do the work to show you why we would have made a decision because of safety or whatever. You didn't get to see the building built because it's not designed yet, but there'll be a lot of thinking about welcoming and the safety and all of that in the covered areas and how that all works. The play area and that kind of space. For an elementary school, play area is so important, not just an extended day. And for a pre-k, they have, they need their own age-appropriate play areas that are in the right places at the right time. And that's, we have landscape architects who look very specifically at that. We do that all the time. I just want you to know that that will be part of the whole formula and what you're buying to get this school, the whole site, not just a building. Any other things that somebody brought up?
So last week, I went to the senior center or whatever they're calling it now, proposal. And they're proposing a $27 million funding on Simon's Way across the street. So I asked, you do realize they're talking about increasing the whole student population at Killam? And half the people in the room said, what? I know that you're a separate firm, they have a separate firm, there's a separate selectment committee for this, there's one for that. I don't think people are really talking and realizing that this, and the seniors aren't just going to come in on April Street, they're going to be coming from all around town. And they're looking at expanding, they want, you know, a $5 million gym, even though we have a lot of gyms in this town. The bottom line is, they're talking about a lot of stuff in a small area at the same time. And I don't think everybody's considering. You know, traffic studies and their traffic studies and.
I can't speak to how much they don't love this.
I'm putting that out there because. I'm putting it out there.
I thought that was nixed. I missed that last meeting. I thought that the senior center was kind of nixed as the idea over on that area. I saw that the other day, but I didn't follow it.
They're down to three and I gotta tell you, my vibe was, they like Simon's Way.
I, I, we had a very long discussion about that a year and a half ago, that the Simon's Way was actually a horrible idea because the seniors, unless we added busing to get them there. So I don't know what happened since I haven't, haven't been able to get to the meeting.
Just the vibe from the room, the vibe. It's just.
So I do have another question about this. Oh, sorry. Again, I haven't been as involved in the last year with some of this. My wife's been coming to some of these, but I went to one of these meetings real, real, before I think you guys were even involved. I thought the idea of, I thought one of the numbers that stuck out to me, so it's still in my head, is that because we can only do a renovation or an addition on one lot, because originally there was thoughts about fixing this school and doing some renovations to another school to increase the student body, that this new build renovation, whatever it ends up being, was supposed to accommodate 700 K through five students. And now I'm seeing only 455. So I must have missed something along the way that changed that number. Because I'm understanding all the other schools are over capacity at this point and they were going to try to use Killam as the, let's move kids here. No, I know, I didn't want it either.
I will tell you that. An enrollment study was done for the town and they came up with scheme like A through H. And they looked at every single site, every single school site in the town and came up with recommendations. This was the most feasible recommendation. I don't ever remember there being 700 students. I mean, there could, there could have been.
I just heard number 900 was voted at one point, like the literal exact.
So, so we, we have gone to the MSBA with the numbers that we've gone to them with and that's where we're at right now. If we were going to change that at all, which we're not planning on changing that at all, we would have to go back to the MSBA because we would have, in essence, broke our contract with them.
So what's the.
Just hold on a second, let me finish answering that question. So just to build on that, there was, took one of the recommendations or one of the options at 700 First High School. That was also before our most recent enrollment study and projection going forward through 2032, which we had a year and a half ago or so, which showed that our growth rate was nowhere near what that growth rate was projected to be. And that's where you're seeing the numbers now that you're seeing for the 455. But you had the 455 and the 130, now you're up to 635, right? So you're not far below the 700 per, but you are a bigger school. And I hear your concerns. We have other positives, right? To work through, but there are a lot of things we've got to work on in that front. So in addition to that, that you probably remember from that meeting, there were all sorts of options in terms of, is Killam phase one of two, right? Or potentially Birch Meadow would be an addition at some point in time, a later point in time. Ideally, I think from many of our perspectives, we're trying not to do two building projects if we can avoid it. If that's what it comes up to be from a solution perspective, because this lot doesn't service 635 students or anything else like that, it'll be something to be tackled three, four, five, 10 years down the road as we work through that. Ultimately, it's what's feasible. We're in the feasibility stage. What's feasible? How much, how much can this lot handle? How much can the traffic handle? And to your other point, there are a lot of other conversations going on around town. And I think it's incumbent upon the select or the school committee, finance committee, et cetera, as we work to plan that holistically across the town. Whether that's the senior center, whether that's this, whether that's other tax-related conversations that are going to.
One more, I'm sorry. Since we have this super interview here, where, where is, what is the decision-making process on bringing a whole RISE program here? Like where does it stand? What's being considered? And why do we even, why are we considering this? Sorry.
Great question. So many more conversations to have to be had. I think kind of as Lee said earlier, we expect to have a couple of different models, at least one of which will have pre-k all under one roof and the other which will maintain kind of our current pre-k model with maybe a couple of additional classrooms here. And we'll be able to look at what the design of both models would be and ideally have a ballpark pricing on what each model would look like. And at that time, I think that's when we, as a community, would sit and say, here's the benefits we see of having RISE under one roof. Is that worth it, we think, for the price here and for maybe some of the other drawbacks or concerns that have been raised? I don't think we are at that point now to have that. But I will say, short, we feel that being able to have all of the pre-k students under one roof ensures that all of the services provided for that student are provided in one school. So right now, we have our, our pre-k director, our speech language pathologist, our occupational therapist between three schools. We think that having all the schools, all the students together under one roof helps builds a school community, ensures consistency in services, et cetera. Now, is that, you know, the benefits of that, which I think in isolation are positive for kids, is that outweigh one of the other potential traffic concerns? You know, implications on having it maybe build up in a way we don't necessarily want to? We don't know. So I think at this point, we're just trying to have all of our options open and we certainly haven't, you know, gone one direction or the other yet. I will share, one of the things we have to do now is in a, in a program requirements document we have to submit to the MSBA, we have to sort of outline our case of why we think will be beneficial to students. So we are trying to do a lot of, have a lot of conversations with neighboring preschools that are under one roof, have conversations with a lot of our families and see, so we can clearly articulate the benefits of having it in one space. But I still think we're not even there yet fully mapping out that rationale. But a great question. Yeah, so don't, there's, there's absolutely no decisions yet that have been made on, on that.
Thanks. As the project manager, it's my job to keep time and we're 10 minutes over time. I want to be respectful of everyone's time here that you spent with us this evening and everyone has kids and things to get back to, so.
Let me just ask one question. I just, one question. The future meetings are all being held at the high school, not here, and I'm just wondering why?
No, the next one's also here.
It is here? I think on the recycling announcement that it was all listed on.
Jane and I do communications. So among a few other fascinating things. Ask me about my job sometimes. But yes, you're correct. In the DPW newsletter that went out, we had some of our meetings planned for the high school library because they were coinciding in some cases with school committee meetings. We decided as a committee to change that. So the next meeting is April 11th, it is here, so that folks who are in the neighborhood can come here easily, parents can get here easily, and you can also see the school. We'll be doing some tours at the beginning of the meeting on the 11th. So please come out for those, it'll be before the 7:00 PM start. Visit killumschool.com, sign up for our notifications. Who here have code red today reminding them of this meeting? It's thrilling, right? That was my voice, I know. It's thrilling. Thank you very much. So anyway, yes, so follow us, get our information. We are, you can send an email to the committee, we will follow up with you. We meet on communications every week. If you feel you aren't getting the information you need, we want to hear from you. You can catch me over there for the other discussions. Thank you, Jenny.
Thank you. And feel free to talk to any of us on the project team after if you want to have more discussions. Thank you, have a great night.